Twenty twenty-five, and we'll start out with the roll call and introductions.
Commissioner Hussein.
Present.
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Banha.
Here.
Commissioner Henchess.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Also, in the chambers this evening, we have Brad Davis, our planning manager, at the end of the podium. Next to him is Rachel Nasbush, the deputy clerk to the board. In the audience, I see Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, our principal planner, and Nathan Hall, our associate planner, and Tom Wolfe, our county commissioners in the audience as well with us this evening. So, the first item of business is the approval of the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes. The commissioners have all been sent copies of the minutes. Are there any additions or deletions as the minutes are printed? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second by Commissioner Pika. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Our next item is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a planning commission board member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda, considered separately. Like a motion to open the consent agenda, considering the three items on it.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Henchess. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, the three items are, number three, one, number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero three, a request to approve an interim use permit to add a detached accessory dwelling unit, an ADU, for a family member, Victoria Wenner, applicant, Interels Gilbert, property owner, in section fourteen of Newmarket Township. Would anyone like to have that removed from the consent agenda? Okay. Number two, number twenty twenty-five zero zero eight, request to approve a rezoning of one hundred and twenty acres from A-one Agricultural Preservation District to A-three Agricultural Preservation Density District, Patrick G. Sullivan, applicant, and Harlan and Leon Labs, property owner, in section seventeen of Belle Plaine Township. Would anyone like that to be removed from consent agenda? Okay. Number three, number twenty twenty-five zero zero five, a request to approve an interim use permit to operate a temporary asphalt plant for to the twenty twenty-five construction season, Valley Plating Paving Incorporated, applicant, and Ted G. and Mary R. Cordner, property owners, in section thirty-two and thirty-three of Saint Lawrence Township and sections four and five of Belle Plaine Township. Would anyone like that removed from the consent agenda? Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda. His way.
Mr. Chairman, approve the consent agenda as written and noting that town boards have recommended approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote on these items. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Those three items have been approved that were on the consent agenda this evening. Our next item is a public hearing. That's number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero six and twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven, request to approve additional use permit for installation of advertising sign, Lamar Advertising, applicant, and Dusset Family Holdings LLC, property owner, in section twenty-eight of Louisville Township. And Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, will be making the staff presentation this evening. Good evening, Mr. Schmitz.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. You can see a site location map for the two properties. Lamar Advertising is requesting advertising signs on. The properties are located on the east side of State Highway one sixty-nine and Louisville Road, about a half mile north of County Road fourteen. Both of the properties are owned by the Dusset family. The southern parcel here is actually Bluffside Properties. That's the location of Paul and Cheryl Dusset's businesses, which include work and place storage and auto repair business. They also lease to some other industrial uses on that property. And then the parcel to the north is the Dusset Family Holdings property. That property includes a small quarry operation that was operated by Brian Rock. That quarry is currently in the process of being reclaimed. There's also some agricultural land on that parcel and then some wooded areas along the bluff line. All our portions of both properties are zoned industrial. The parcel to the north is currently vacant and it's owned commercial, C-one. The properties on the west side of one sixty-nine here are the location of the Brian Rock quarry. It's actually the removal of a couple advertising signs on the Brian Rock property that made these Dusset parcels eligible for advertising signs. To the south, we have Stream Transport, which is a trucking company. I'm going to jump to an aerial photo. Here you can see an aerial photo of the two parcels. This parcel here to the south is the Bluffside Properties, work and place storage on here. That's the bulk of the storage. And then the parcel to the north is the Dusset Family Holdings property. You can see the quarry operation up here adjacent to one sixty-nine, the agricultural land, agricultural land here in Bluff Land, along the bluff. Jump now to an aerial photo that shows the location of the advertising signs. One would be located in the central part of the Bluffside Properties here, the other fourteen hundred feet roughly to the north in the center of the Dusset Family Holdings property. County ordinance does allow advertising signs with a conditional use permit in the I-one district, provided those advertising signs are set back thirteen hundred feet from other advertising signs. As I said, these two signs are about fourteen hundred feet apart. The closest advertising sign off of the property is located to the south, to the south, a little over thirteen hundred feet on the west side of one sixty-nine. Both signs that are proposed would be two-sided signs, total square footage of approximately four hundred and seventy-eight square feet, signs that'd be about thirty feet high and set back ten feet from the right away as required by ordinance. Here's a schematic for each of the signs. So you can see each of the signs would be supported by a single pole, be two-sided, as I said earlier. The sign face would be approximately twenty-three feet wide and ten and a half feet tall. The schematic shows the signs as thirty feet, nine inches high. They'll need to be reduced to thirty feet to comply with ordinance. Building permits will be required for each of these signs, and if MINDA requires some type of advertising device permit, they will need to get that also prior to any building permit being issued for these signs. That concludes my report. Staff is recommending approval of the signs, subject to the conditions in the planning report. The town board of Louisville did recommend approval of the request at their January ninth meeting. Representative from Lamar Advertising is here, along with the Dusset family and Louisville Township, if you have any questions for them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schmitz. Any questions? Commissioner Robbins?
Yeah, I note, Marty, that on the suggested recommendation, it only lists one sign. Am I missing something? Are there two signs?
There are two signs, one sign on each property, Commissioner Robbins. On this drawing, you can see the one sign down here in the center of the Bluffside Properties parcel, and then a second sign up here, fourteen hundred feet to the north, on the Dusset Family Holdings property.
So does it take, then, two motions to pass this?
No, we can approve this in one motion. We'll just include both numbers in that motion.
All right. Mr. Chairman, just one more question. The applicants here tonight?
Yes, they is.
Do we have any idea what's going to go on those billboards? I mean, they're advertising, does... I just, I'm curious.
Don Lamar Advertising. It would be various messages typically what we put on the applications that we do. It does, there's an approval process that goes through the corporate office before, you know, advertising is granted for a customer. So it's, you know, it has to be appropriate to be put up on the billboard, you can't just put anything up there. So there are restrictions that, you know, the company has, you know, just ethically.
Is it just print or it's not electronic?
No, sir. It's just, it's a static.
Correct.
Static, right? That's exactly correct.
Yep. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robbins, I would like to add that these signs will be lit, so there'll be lights extending out from the bottom of the sign upward facing at those signs. So they will be lit, however, it will not be that dynamic display type of sign that you're alluding to.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Schmitz. Maybe different questions. Is this a public hearing? If you'd like to make comments on this application before, you can come up to the podium. Please start with your name. There is a sign-up machine as well. Sheen is known as making a move to come up to that podium. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second by Commissioner Huber. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion or discussion on the item.
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of a conditional use permit for Lamar Advertising to construct and operate a four hundred and seventy-eight square foot billboard, noting that this recommendation is subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, also that the township has approved.
Two billboards.
Two.
I have a motion by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Henchess. I would add that this covers two CUP's conditional use permits, twenty twenty-four dash zero zero six and dash zero zero seven. Is that amenable to those making that?
Amenable.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, at this time, I have a motion before us. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Okay, very good. Our next item is a request, number twenty twenty-four dash zero seven six, to approve an interim use permit amendment to expand sand and gravel mining operations, Pentagon Materials, Inc., applicant, and Schultz Gravel Pit LLC, property owner, in section thirty-three of Saint Lawrence Township. And Greg Wagner, our principal planner, will be making a staff report this evening. Good evening, Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Commissioners. So on the screen is the site location map of the Schultz family property on section thirty-three of Saint Lawrence Township. Property is located along US Highway one sixty-nine, in between the cities of Jordan and Belle Plaine. Schultz family has their farmstead on the property just to the north. The parcel in red is the proposed mining expansion, or the properties that would have the mining on. The blue line indicates the proposed expansion to the mining. The black line here indicates the current mining area, which you'll see on the aerial. Just for other locational purposes, the property is accessed from the south, which is County Road sixty-six, or Old Highway one sixty-nine Boulevard, which is a paved county road. So you can see large parcels in this area. It's largely rural. And then going over to the aerial photo, again, the Schultz family farmstead, the family farm, and then you can see the current mining area, which was permitted five years ago by the current interim use permit. And then again, the blue is the area that they're proposing to expand into. So the request before you tonight is to expand the mining operation both horizontally, but also to allow, horizontally by sixty acres, from twenty-six acres up to eighty-six acres, and then also allow additional mining into the water table. So currently, the IUP is approved for excavation into the water table. That is currently just done via backhoe generally, but they are proposing to go deeper where there are materials available. And the applicant's engineer, Kirsten Polly, is here, and she'll do a follow-up presentation after I'm done, and she'll talk more about those methods for you. Again, just for location, the Schultz family has the residence to the north. There is a residence directly across County Road sixty-six. This area here was actually previously mined, it just wasn't reclaimed, it's an old mine. So this area, Valley Paving, was on the agenda earlier, they're located just to the southwest. So this is an area very active with aggregate resources in Scott County. The site, this is just an example of the water table. As I mentioned, they are going to propose increased excavation into the water table where materials are available. You can see, based on the two-foot topography, this is showing the water table. The site generally flows from south-southeast to the north-northwest. This is the existing conditions map. So again, the existing mine is down in the southwest corner. It has its own access on the western portion of the property. The Schultz farmstead has a gravel driveway that goes out to County Road sixty-six currently that they use for accessing their fields and alternative access to their farmstead. Their farmstead does have direct access to US Highway one sixty-nine currently. You can see most of the area that is to be mined is agricultural field. The green on the map indicates wooded areas. There are wetlands in the northern part of the property, but you can see the proposed mine limits in the blue dash do stop short of those mining, or those wetland areas. So there is no proposal to mine into delineated wetland areas. Here's their proposed operations plan. So mining will first expand from phase one, which is the current mine, to the east, which would be phase two and phase three. During phase two, the Schultz farm access road will be relocated and connect up with a mining entrance. And then, once this area is mined out, they'll proceed to phase four and then probably realign that driveway. We're talking life of the mine, probably between twenty to twenty-five years. So the driveway relocation would be something that we put a condition in the staff report that they will need to review in the future with county transportation. Old Highway one sixty-nine Boulevard is a future corridor for the County Road Eight east-west alignment. So currently, County Road Eight essentially stops at State Highway twenty-one, but there are plans to extend County Road Eight to the west, and that alignment generally follows County Road sixty-six. So there's still work to be done with county transportation, how that alignment will work in the future. So since we're talking probably twenty years of mining, twenty, twenty-five years of mining, the applicants in Pentagon will work with county transportation when that driveway gets put back. More than likely, they will, the Schultz family will need a driveway. It is the goal of MINDA to remove direct accesses from one sixty-nine. We're not saying they're going to lose their access any time soon, but at some point, you know, it may be disconnected from one sixty-nine. So their only access to their property could be off of the county road to the south. But again, that's something we'll figure out down the road. We have a condition in the CUP to deal with that. Let me go back. So currently, the site is screened on the south by this existing screening berm here. With the proposed expansion to the east, they are proposing to add additional berm. So essentially, once they take up the topsoil and overburden, they use that for the berm. On the north side, the site is wooded, so it's very limited visibility from one sixty-nine, but they are proposing an additional berm in this location here. So really filling in the gaps of where visually you're able to see into the site. The stockpile and processing area is generally here, and that will kind of stay, things may migrate a little bit as mining occurs, but they're proposing currently to keep it in that similar location. This is just more of an overview to kind of show you. Again, I mentioned the Valley Paving Mine to the southwest, and then right here adjacent to that is the Miranda Mine. And then up towards the city of Jordan, we have the Sand Piper Mines operated by Henchess. So as I said, this is a very common use in this corridor. There are a lot of county roads. The main haul route for this mine is County Road sixty-six to the west to connect up to one sixty-nine. They are able, as projects occur to the east and south, they are able to use Old Highway one sixty-nine Boulevard more on a limited basis, which goes to County Road fifty-nine, but using county roads and the US highway system as the main haul routes. This is generally the reclamation plan. As indicated, the site is between the cities of Jordan and Belle Plaine. It's outside of the growth areas for both cities right now, the twenty forty growth area. So there's no real imminent plans for development. County zoning is one per forty in this area, so the reclamation at this point would be to put it back to an agricultural state. Development is likely decades away, so there's no imminent need to reclaim it other than, for anything other than agricultural use at this time. There will be a water feature remaining here that will take some of that surface drainage, but that would be the only change. It'll be put back to an agricultural condition after mining is complete. And lastly, for my part, Pentagon did attend the Saint Lawrence Township Board Meeting on January ninth and received a recommendation to expand to the eighty-six acres. The township is here tonight, if you have any questions for either of the board members. But at this time, I'll introduce Kirsten Polly from Sunday Engineering, and she's going to give you a little more detail on the mining expansion and the wet mining operations.
Mr. Chairman, Greg, how far from Jordan or Belle Plaine is this property, roughly?
We're about two miles from Belle Plaine, I would say. We're over two miles from Jordan because they have that area that they've designated as their growth area, and we're well outside that area too. So we're kind of in the middle of the two cities, which I think are like seven miles apart.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I just have one?
Absolutely.
One thing I noticed in the report is the intent to mine underneath the water table, and we probably have talked about this before, and it may be that she will tell us about, but that did trigger my alertness on that, that you're going to mine underneath the water table.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Robbins, Kirsten will talk more about that, but just so the commission knows, the current IUP, so the mine has been there for just over five years, the current IUP does allow them to excavate into the water table. And so as I indicated, typically, right now, they're just using a backhoe to excavate material. So they are doing it now. What they're proposing is to go deeper, and Kirsten will talk more about that.
All right, very good. Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the Planning Advisory Commission. As Greg mentioned, my name is Kirsten Polly. I'm a geologist and civil engineer with Sunday Engineering, here tonight on behalf of Pentagon Materials. Also in the audience is Marty Prouser from Pentagon Materials. And I've, I know you've heard me give presentations before on some of these mining operations, so I'll keep my comments rather brief. I think Greg did a good job of giving you a lot of the overview of the site, but I will talk about, a little bit about some of the things like the groundwater. Sorry. This, okay, this business, okay. So as you have discussed, the site is located kind of between Belle Plaine and the city of Jordan, and a little bit closer to Belle Plaine, but outside of the city limits and outside of any orderly annexation area. It's entirely within Saint Lawrence Township, and just to the southeast of US one sixty-nine. And the site was originally permitted in twenty eighteen, so it has been in operation for about five years. Oops, I did it again. There you go. So the existing site is about twenty-six acres in size, and the expansion adds an additional sixty acres. And as Greg mentioned, this is an area where there's been a lot of sand and gravel mining. The Valley Paving Mine is just to the southwest, and then to the west of that is Pentagon Materials' Miranda Mine. And both of those mining operations have also, in the recent few years, undergone expansions as well. Because the site is over forty acres in size, it was subject to, the expansion triggered a mandatory environmental assessment worksheet. This is a standard process that is regulated by the EQB, the Minnesota Environmental Quality Board. The Scott County was the regulatory government unit, or RGU, that oversaw that environmental review process. It involved completing a worksheet that discusses different topics, land cover, geology, soils, water resources, both surface waters and groundwater, stormwater, air noise, transportation issues, cultural resources, fish and wildlife. So a standard, about twenty-six different topics that are looked at. The Scott County Board of Commissioners, in October of twenty twenty-four, adopted findings of fact and conclusions of law and a negative declaration on the need for an EIS. So that takes into consideration the type, extent, or reversibility of a likely effect, the proposed mitigation, any kinds of plans, like fugitive dust control plans, water quality monitoring, those types of things are reviewed as part of that finding. And the process concluded that the mine expansion does not have the potential for significant environmental effects. So once environmental review is complete, then the IUP permit application process can proceed. So the application was submitted. This picture just shows, this is the existing mine, and kind of gives an illustration of essentially the mining process. We're not asking for any changes to the proposed mining activities. Topsoil and overburden are removed from an area that's going to be mined, and then the material is removed from the floor of the mine and transported to processing areas. As Greg mentioned, the existing IUP does allow mining below the water table. The other two mines in this area also are allowed to mine below the water table. And the current, the current size of this existing mine is only about twenty-six acres, so it's relatively small and doesn't allow a lot of open area. So the current operation, mining below the water table, is done with a backhoe, which has an extent of about twenty feet below the water table. So when we talk about below the water table, the water table's an actual surface. It's where there's saturated materials. And so by allowing mining below the water table, you're allowed to just remove that material that's situated below the water table. It's very common in Minnesota to mine below water table. There's a lot of resource that is located below there, and in this case, there is as well. You can see in the foreground, this is from the Schultz Mine, this picture, and you can see some of the aggregate in the foreground of this picture. So the material below the water table is an important resource. And with the, with the expansion, because a little bit larger area is then available for mining, and soil borings that were taken in looking at whether or not it made sense to expand, it did indicate that there's some good pockets of really nice material below the water table. The practical limit of a backhoe is only about twenty feet deep, and the material extends thirty to forty feet deep, the good material. So you can use other methods, dragline, something called a sourman, or a slackline dredge in order to remove the material, that's that deeper material. This is an illustration of one of those pieces of equipment that was actually set up at the prior, like aggregates mine that Pentagon is operating. And you can see, there's a large bucket that's being, that basically is, there's cables and a large bucket goes down, and it moves along the bottom of the excavation, and that bucket scoops up the material, and then the cables draw that bucket up. And in this, in this picture, that white bucket is full of material that that has been brought up from the bottom. And then the second, it's a series of pictures, the, the far left, you can see that white bucket is then moved up a chute, the material's dropped, water drains off, and then the material's transported to the, to be processed. This is just one example of a piece of equipment that is likely to be utilized at the site to go these deeper elevations. Something like this, you can get depths of up to 100 feet below the water table. The resource here does not extend that deep. So in this case, the, the mining will be about 30 to 40 feet in, in areas below, below the water table.
Can I, can I just, so you have this bucket, it comes up, the material's there, and then you said, and you let the water drain out back to the water table?
Correct. Yes.
And there's, you said it's a common practice, but you don't harm the water or anything like that in terms of?
No. There's no chemicals used.
Pollution or something like?
Yeah. Correct. So the, the water just drains off by gravity. There's no need to pump. Some operations, you can pump to lower the water table, and then you excavate in what's called the, in the dry mining method. But when you pump to lower the water table, there's the potential for more effects to the, to adjacent wells, for example. So it's always preferable if you can, if you can just use this wet mining method to remove the material. There's fewer impacts to the water table. And at this site, when the site was originally approved to mine below the water table, there was also a water quality monitoring program that was required, and that will continue. And so basically, it's taking a grab sample from the exposed water body that's been created from mining and testing for diesel range organics, which are an indicator that, that there's a petroleum impact, right? Diesel fuel or some kind of a hydraulic oil or something that would have impacted the groundwater. So it's, the water is tested three times a year on a quarterly basis by an independent lab, and those results are submitted to the, the county. It's also tested for nitrates, which are an agricultural chemical, but because it's in an area that has a lot of agricultural activity, nitrates are also tested. There are perimeter berms around the excavation area that prevent stormwater runoff from the agricultural fields from rain, from draining into the excavation. And that's one of the groundwater protection measures that's implemented at this site.
Commissioner Busain.
Mr. Chair. So I have, how far this, your excavation is from the road, from 169?
There's a, there's a 50-foot setback required from the right-of-way to the excavation limits.
Okay. So, so you're observing that 50-foot limit?
Yeah. Yeah.
Because there's a chance of the road being affected, this highway being affected by your excavation. So you have to take appropriate measures.
Correct. Yes. So, and that area that's closest to 169 is actually an area where it's at a lower elevation. There's quite a bit of overburden there, and so that's the final phase. And that overburden will be used to, to reclaim the final other phases of the site as well. So probably more limited excavation adjacent to 169 than in the, the main portion of the, the mining operation.
And also the structure that is in between, now, now it will be very close to the excavated area. So what measures are you taking to, to protect the structure from the dust and air pollutants?
The, the structure being the residence, the residential, the, the house? Yeah. That, so the closest house is immediately adjacent to the property. You can see the magenta. That, that's the Schultz residence. And measures taken to control fugitive dust include watering the haul roads, the perimeter screening berms. The processing operations are all located on the floor of the mine in a recessed area, which helps, the topography helps to trap any fugitive dust emissions. And then the vegetative screening and perimeter berms around the, around the perimeter. The site is subject to a Minnesota Pollution Control Agency air permit, and as part of that permit, there are fugitive dust control requirements. And that, that's a Minnesota Pollution Control Agency permit that regulates that.
And the last question is regarding that area that is where, on the north side of the structure or the residence that you have left out. Why is that area left out and is not made the part of your?
The mining operation?
Yeah, mining operation.
I, I think it was, I don't know if originally that parcel was a separate parcel that the residence was built on, and then there were, was another parcel, but it was just split off at some point to separate the residence from the remaining property.
And the green line, the, the green part shows that there's, or the plant to do some agriculture, I think. So how it is protected, the water that is being used there, now that agricultural part is being protected from the pollutant water that has, that has the potential to be used.
How is the agricultural fields protected from the water in the mining operation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a crop that you are growing, but you use the water and the chemicals also.
So the concern with the agricultural activity adjacent to an area where you're mining in the water table is to prevent stormwater runoff when it rains and falls on a field, and say there's just been an application of fertilizer, and it falls on the field, that stormwater runs off. And it currently runs through, it might be a vegetated filter, and then into the wetland area. And so what is designed here around all the excavations, there's a small perimeter berm that diverts stormwater runoff from entering into the mining operation, where that stormwater could have high nitrate levels, for example, or chemical fertilizers, and get into the groundwater table. So there's perimeter berms that are put around the excavation so that you don't get that agricultural run-on into the site.
Okay. So that, that way you are protecting that water?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes. So the processing activities that occur on this site are, there's crushing, screening, and washing. The wash plant is set up to recycle wash water. The wash water picks up fine sediment, it settles out, and then goes into a series of sedimentation basins and is recycled back to the plant. The washing is subject to a Department of Natural Resources' Water Appropriations Permit. There is one for the site. They've been washing for the last several years. So there's no changes requested there. The site also recycles concrete and asphalt, and in accordance with the county requirements, there's an annual solid waste license for that activity. Basically, pieces of concrete and asphalt are brought to the site, stockpiled, and then they're crushed using the same equipment that's used to crush sand and gravel, and then they produce a recycled product. And then, of course, there's stockpiling on-site and loading and loading activities as well. This is the kind of phasing plan that Greg went over. The, the main part of this is Phase 1 is the existing operations. The, the mine is nearing completion of Phase 1. And the next move would be then to relocate the secondary access to the Schultz residence and continue mining then to the, the west and northwest. Nope, that's east, to the east and northeast. And then, then finishing up with that Phase 4, moving towards 169 and reestablishing that secondary access at its current location. The applicant and homeowner understand that there are potential changes to County Road 66 and that pending final design, that there's going to have to be coordination and permits to do that secondary access and, and do that work. As Greg mentioned, that's going to be a ways down the road. So I have a typo, but stormwater and groundwater protection. So there is a resource management plan that has been prepared for this site that is in accordance with Scott County's water resources, that's been reviewed by the water resource engineer. And that incorporates things like stormwater pollution prevention plans, setbacks from wetlands. There's fuel handling and storage that is performed on-site in accordance with the Pollution Control Agency rules, again, designed to protect groundwater. There is a Minnesota Pollution Control Agency NPDES/SDS permit, which, which is a permit that controls stormwater discharges from the site. So the things like I was talking about, the preventing the agricultural run-on and, and making sure that any discharge from the site is clean water. There's a pollution prevention plan that is required as part of that permit. The company has adopted spill prevention and response policies, and then the ongoing groundwater monitoring plan that monitors on a quarterly basis for the diesel range organics, to make sure that, even though all these safeguards are in place, to make sure that there has been no spills or impact to groundwater. Reclamation is to reclaim the, the site to agricultural activity. And there'll be, it'll lower the site approximately 30 feet. The, the areas that were mined below the water table, for the most part, will be backfilled with granular material, and then there will be overburden that has more organics and clays placed in the upper three feet. It won't be compacted, but will be then usable as return to agricultural uses. So that is the reclamation plan for this site. And with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
A couple of things. You're planning to mine probably almost down to the bedrock, roughly, close to the bedrock. Sandstone's down about 30, 40 feet. So you'll be mining close to that. And the sand coming out is pretty clean, about 5% fines, 7, 8% fines. Do you know how clean the sand they're mining?
Marty, how, how clean is the sand that you're getting?
Sand is very clean within, within the mining operation itself.
Like 3, 3, 3, 4, 5% fines, roughly?
Yes, if that.
In that box. Okay.
And on our operation here too, I mean, we predominantly just do a washing operation.
Sure.
Have very few fugitive dust emissions. You come in and probably crush for about a month, six weeks out of the year if we make a suitable product for the townships and county purposes. But mostly, the operations are washed plants.
Okay. So you'll mine, take the aggregate out for concrete or whatever, and then you're going to put the sand as a waste product back in, into the water table, which is, happens all the time.
Right.
So I'm just, and it would definitely be suitable for ag. You're going to be pretty close to the water table, it's in about four or five feet, but it's fine for ag.
Right.
It, it could be a challenge down the line, and maybe that's 40, 50 years from now, if a light commercial or housing comes in there, that could be more of a challenge in those areas. But that's so far down the line, I don't know if we need to worry about that too much.
Correct. And depending upon that area, Phase 4, that has a lot of overburden, there may be, you know, we want to show the, the lowest reclamation grades, but there may be material available to, to provide a little bit more fill material above the water table.
Look at a raising grade to build housing in there, maybe even like commercial. And it could be a challenge for dewatering, but again, we're not talking about something that's maybe 40, 50 years from now. But I mean, dewatering, if you had to put utilities in there, that could cause issues with the loose sands.
Right. Right.
Okay. As long as it's kept ag and like commercial, housing's out in there for a while, it should be just fine, I would guess.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yeah, I just want to go back and, and understand. If you do this, you're going to be doing this for what, 20 years, roughly?
Approximately, yes.
And during that 20 years, then you, this, there's a lot of permits that go with this, and you are going to test water on this site three times a year?
Correct.
So, as you, excuse me?
We currently do that annually right now, the last five years.
Yeah. But that's what you're going to be doing all of this time. Because somebody asked me.
Right.
Have to be able to say, yeah, they test all the time. So if anything happens. All right?
Correct. Yep. Three times a year, that's part of the permit requirement that, that in the IUP.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any other questions right now? Okay. Thank you very much. There may be further questions. Let's move along.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comment on this application before us, they can come up to the podium at this time. There's a sign on sheet, and please start with your name.
Bob Heper, Louisville Township Supervisor. I guess my question kind of goes to Kirsten, but I'll ask it to you. We've gone through mining in Louisville Township, so I'm pretty much accustomed to what goes on. I'm curious, from, from your monitoring wells, how far is this parcel till it actually gets to the river? And how many other wells and dwellings are in between that area? And you have several mines kind of in a row. Is your monitoring wells going to pick up if there was a spill in your area versus a spill in somebody else's area as far as which way the flow goes?
I'll have her come up and answer your question there, Bob.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, so where the Schultz Mine is, and all these mines, so it's about, what, one, each of these is a section, so one, two, two to three miles to the river? I think, one of the maps. Oh, there you go. There's wells.
Right. So to answer that question, there are a few residential water supply wells that are located down gradient of this site. The closest is the Schultz Residence. The, the monitoring at the Schultz site is from the actual water body that is created as part of mining. You saw that there were the other two mining operations, and those also have groundwater monitoring requirements. And those have actual wells. The Valley Paving Site has three monitoring wells that are situated in a way to make sure that the downgradient water is being tested. And then the Miranda Mine as well. And so there's, comprehensively with those other two mines and this mine, there's quite a bit of groundwater monitoring going on, and all in areas that are down gradient of, of the mining activity and up gradient of any, any residential well. So there's a, there's a pretty solid monitoring well network in this area that is mined, that is monitoring the groundwater of all the mining area, and, and before it leaves offsite and, and goes down. and goes down gradient to where there would be a residential well. Most of the residential wells that are located down gradient of this site are finished in the Jordan aquifer or lower bedrock aquifers and not in the upper water table. So all of that was looked at in the environmental reviews that was conducted for the site that were conducted.
Just a clarification, I think Marty said, this is what, two or three miles from the river, from the Minnesota River?
Yeah, it's a ways, yeah. Maybe, Minnesota goes to 2,000 feet. It's about, I would say it's about a mile.
A mile from the Minnesota River?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there a discharge somewhere in that area where it actually comes out into the river?
Bob, just so we all hear the question, if you want to come up here and ask it, so that she can answer it. Thank you.
So in this area, is there a creek or something where this water is coming up and then going into the river? Or does it just leach up through the grounds?
So you can see this plan that's in front of you, there's a wetland to the north, that's in the area, as in this terrace area, the whole Minnesota River Valley, groundwater is flowing towards the river. So you saw the direction of groundwater flow, it's flowing towards the river, and it's a discharge area, so the water is coming up into the river valley. And so there's wetlands that are located at the base of the terrace that will be mined, and that groundwater is flowing into the, when the groundwater is high, it is sustaining that wetland. And you can see there's this channel, it's a drainage channel, there's culverts under 169. It's the start of a drainage pattern that then makes its way. Yeah.
Kirsten Meyer at the podium, I have a question for you, related to the reclamation plan or the inland use plan?
Yeah.
Question on the future water body, looks like it's two and a half acres, maybe about 20 feet deep?
Right.
What's the purpose of the future water body? Why at that location, why that size?
Aesthetics, and because then that provides an outlet eventually and use that instead of being, a lot of times mines, if you mine down all around the perimeter, you have no way for stormwater to leave the site at the end of the day. This provides an opportunity to daylight and have a positive overflow from the site. And then it provides a little aesthetic amenity for the property owner.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. This is still a public hearing, so if anyone else has, we may have you back up again to answer questions. Is any other questions about this application before us? Okay, at this time I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Motion, make, Commissioner Robbins, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second, back to Commissioner Hentges. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
At this time I will entertain a motion or discussion on this item.
Mr. Chair, based on criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the Intervious Amendment for Pentagon Materials to expand and operate a sand and gravel mine, noting that this recommendation is subject to the conditions to be satisfied prior to County Board consideration of the IUP, and noting the Town Board has recommended approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Huber, a second back to Commissioner Robbins. Any further discussion? At this time, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Thank you very much for your attendance this evening and the information provided. Our next item before us is the Planning Manager of State, so I'll go to Brad Davis, our Planning Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will recap votes that the County Board took based on your recommendations here back on January 21st. The County Board did approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Regide 10 properties in Lydia, and we had a couple of different hearings on that matter with a recommendation of approval. They did approve that, that request now goes to the Metropolitan Council for review, and if it makes it through the Met Council, it comes back to the County Board for adoption. Last week on February 4th, they approved the rezoned preliminary final plat of the Reese Graff Farm, and they also just received information on the Demcon Bioenergy Anaerobic Digestor Project. It was an opportunity for the Board just to learn more about that project, ask some questions before it goes to their meeting next week for formal approval. So those are some of the Board actions, and then following this meeting, we will go to a workshop next door in the room and talk about accessory dwelling units.
Okay, very good. Anything else for the cause before we adjourn to go to our workshop? Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Hentges, second back to Commissioner Huber, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
We'll be going next door for our workshop. Thank you very much for coming this evening.